So, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms. The two items on the agenda are actually fairly exciting and unusual for our board meetings. So, first we get the opportunity to appoint a police officer, which when only has 22 officers in the village, it doesn't happen very often. And we're lucky that most of them stay for a career. So, you know, again, this is a fairly rare opportunity that we've been able to, you know, to perform a couple of months or so in a year. So, this is an exciting evening. And then, right after that, we have some police awards and a ceremony as well. So, there's not any special threat tonight. Everyone's here to be acknowledged. So, let's start first with the resolution of the appointment of a police officer. So, resolved to appoint Scott J. Dunleavy to position of Police Officer Grade Four, an annual salary of $69,688, effective November 20th, 2018, subject to completion of a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. I'll make a motion if I can get a second. All in favor? And then, we'll do the post-annals. You can raise your right hand and repeat that for me. I, Scott J. Dunleavy, of the Village of Irvington, County of West Wester, State of New York, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
to give out some awards and acknowledge some wonderful heroic actions.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the bearded version of the Irvington Police Department's award ceremony. I would imagine some of you are wondering what's up with all the facial hair. Well, this is no shade, no remember. For all the police departments and the PBAs, during the month of, during this month, police officers are given permission to grow hairs or grow out their mustaches for the month in order to raise money for a working cause. Detective Michael Toolen had asked if we could participate and do one for the, do one for retired Irvington Police Officer Peter Corelli, who was circling with multiple sclerosis during his later years of service and caused him to be forced into retirement after 20 years of service to the department and the village. This year, Peter was, had acquired a service dog. His name is Crosby. It has a little bang to it, but that's okay. Which is generously, which was generously given to him through the New Horizons Service Dog. Pete wants to thank the organization by raising funds for canines that will be donated to someone in need. He has raised partially $3,617 from the support of friends and family, and needed to raise $2,500 to cover the rest, of course, that go into donating service dogs. And as a result of all the facial, facial growth, I am happy to announce that we have made a goal of $2,500, which will bring us over the cost of $5,000 that is needed to pay for canine. If you wish to donate, and you don't have to grow facial hair, to do so, the website is newhorizonsservicestalks.org. Now, to begin with, I want to thank the mayor and Board of Trustees for giving us time tonight in order to honor some of the men and women of Irvington Police Department, the local heroes who are committed to bringing safety and community service to the villages and its residents. Very honored and proud to send to you the following officers and cite their deeds of action and courage, which continue to make the Irvington Police Department's compliance on the Hudson. So, we'll get a start. This goes back to the summer of 2014. The village of Irvington had three victims of burglaries, Detective Eric Seaman, Detective Michael Toolen, and Detective Kevin Johnson. The police staff up with guilty track down leads, witnesses, and suspects for months. The detectives arrested an individual on the front of a burglary ring and utilizing information gleaned from that arrest. Were able to connect all three burglaries to a criminal ring committing burglaries in two states. Detectives executed several service warrants along with other law enforcement agencies resulting in the arrest of all members of the burglary ring. January 2018, the ringleader, after opting to fight the charges in trial, was found guilty on 11 counts of burglary and a second degree and sentenced to 18 years in life in state prison. The following officers are commended Excellent Police Duty Medal awarded for demonstrating valuable and intelligent police service presented to Sergeant Never Seen It. He's not here. He's in the desk. He's working tonight.
Can run it over to him.
Detective Michael Toolen and Detective Kevin Johnson. Mike, let's make the presentation. This occurred on August 12th, 2016, at about 2:00, 12:00, excuse me, about 5:12 PM. Home invasion armed robbery. Two males armed with handguns entered the Main Street residence, a wrought leather and adult signed for about $3,000 in United States currency. After pistol looking the male victim, the perpetrators fled the scene. The family shaken and afraid did not call the police in 30 minutes. Once called, there is Police Officer Sergeant Frank Pigletelli, and Sergeant Stephen Delacollie responded, cleared the residence, and then, with the assistance of Sergeant Michael Foley, quickly identified the vehicle the perpetrators had used and in general description of all the, excuse me, all the wild gambling and crucial evidence, including numerous video recordings from around the village. With the evidence initially collected, an effort of more in-depth investigation, Detective Johnson and Detective Eric Seaman and Detective Michael Toolen, along with Greenberg Task Force Detectives Michael McGee and Michael Villia, located an occupied suspect in the city of Beyonce, brought two individuals to the question. This Irvington case connected several cases throughout the area, while working with other law enforcement agencies at both local and federal levels, culminated the arrest of 10 members of a robbery crew, three of whom committed the Irvington robbery. The crew are charged with 50 robberies in 50 counties. Three connected to the Irvington robbery are facing 20 years to life in prison. The following officers, please come up, for maturous police duty, awarded for demonstrating valuable and intelligent police service presented to Sergeant Frank Pigletelli, Sergeant Michael Foley, Sergeant Stephen Delacollie, Detective Johnson, Sergeant Eric Seaman, and Detective Michael Toolen. Along with, I don't know if you hear, two Greenberg detectives. Thank you, gentlemen. This goes to Jessica Pifu, who is not here today. She is on vacation. During calendar years of 2016 and 2017, the Greenberg Drug and Alcohol Task Force initiated several investigations into the sale of illegal narcotics within the borough and surrounding areas. In the need of assistance, the task force requested Police Officer Jessica Hude for assignment. Officer Hude, without reservation, volunteered to take on the often dangerous role of undercover officer in order to purchase illicit drugs from three separate and unrelated targets. Officer Hude has purchased quantities of powdered cocaine, marijuana on numerous occasions. For the task force, which with her valuable assistance throughout the sometimes confusing and overlapping investigations, the task force was able to successfully close several criminal cases as a result of the dealers were arrested and charged with criminal sale controlled substances and subsequently sentenced to years of incarceration. Commendation is awarded to her for intelligently performing her duties in inherently dangerous police activity and understanding of the work ethic and intelligence professionalism. Unfortunately, she's not there, as I said earlier, but we sure will. This occurred on December 12th, excuse me, December 11th, 2017. Police Officer David Walsh, while assigned to routine patrol of 2015 Honda traveling along Harman Road. The hardest doctrine, the hoodos, immediately drew the attention of P.O. Walsh, which seemed to turn around and is marked for the purpose of affecting a traffic stop of the vehicle. At the same time, the operator of the Honda gained speed and attempted to elude P.O. Walsh by turning onto multiple side streets. P.O. Walsh was finally able to block the Honda on a dead end street. Police Officer Walsh was currently determined the operator's privilege to operate a vehicle in New York State to be suspended. P.O. Walsh continued to investigate the operator who forfeited to P.O. Walsh a small amount of marijuana. P.O. Walsh persisted with the investigator, the burglary corrupt a bag containing more than a pound of quality marijuana with a street value of $10,000. The operator was taken into custody and charged with a criminal possession of marijuana second degree, Class D felony. Officer Walsh, please step up. You are nominated for Irvington Policy Duty Medal awarded for demonstrating diligent and intelligent police services presented to you today. On April 10th, 2018, at about 11:24 AM, a murder in the second degree occurred. 9/11 call was received reporting a stabbing at 6 South Fourth Way under the command and direction of Lieutenant Michael Ranald, Sergeant Evan Vines, Detective Kevin Johnson, Detective Michael Toolen, Police Officers David Walsh, Jessica Hude, Patrick Christie, James Zegel, Paul Rebevro, John Mark Ralia, and Safe Guard James Brennan, while acting confidentially, but as well as a discipline team, immediately administered aid to the victim, while they succumbed to his injuries. Identified, took one suspect to the country, searched the scene for further suspects and victims. Safe Guard of the crime scene assisted in the transportation of the victim to the hospital and proceeded wait in a high-depth investigation, which resulted in the indictment of the suspected suspect by a grand jury on the charge of second degree murder and is now facing a life sentence. A unit citation medal goes to the following officers, please step up. Awarded for intelligently performing their assigned duties as a unified and cohesive team during a fluid, complicated, and potentially dangerous situation presented to Lieutenant Michael Ranald. Sergeant Evan Vines, Detective Kevin Johnson, Detective Michael Toolen. Officers, please come up. Police Officers David Walsh, Jessica Hude, Patrick Christie, James Zegel, Paul Rebevro, John Mark Ralia, and that's it. Some officers, obviously, not here because they're working or behind a case. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, this was, I have two awards to give to this officer, who I wish he would come up, because just want to start off with a round of applause, beginning with Angelo, please come up. This award is, you know, I can't even express how he did this, but it's amazing. This is the officer that struggled with a coyote and saved a little girl from a quick, I guess, injuries from a wild coyote. And I'll read the citation. April 29th, 2018, at about 4:22 PM, an animal attacked a rich child while off duty at Carroll Park in Thorpe, New York. Police Officer Angelo, excuse me, Archangelo Libertor observed a coyote viciously attacking a five-year-old girl. Without regard for his own safety, Officer Archangelo Libertor interceded, right of wrestling and fighting, and subsequently pinning the animal to the ground until such time that additional police officers arrived and were able to put the animal down. During the struggle, Officer Libertor and his five-year-old girl both suffered injuries which required immediate treatment at a local hospital. It was later determined that the coyote was rabid, requiring Officer Libertor to further treatment. Commendation Medal awarded for intelligently performing an outstanding act of bravery without regard to his own personal safety and for saving the life of the five-year-old child presented to Police Officer Archangelo Libertor. In addition to this award, some of his, some of the teachers from the Irvington Faculty, known as the Retired Irvington Faculty Association, care of Mary Curtis, got together and they wanted to make a donation to the Irvington Police Department. This donation designated to commemorate Police Officer Libertor's outstanding act of extremism during a coyote attack on April 29th, 2018. Officer Libertor attended the Irvington Schools, and a number of our retired teachers found Angelo as a student. On behalf of its former teachers, I wish to commend Angelo for his applicant, exemplary great reading, Sally Mary Curtis, President of the Retired Irvington Teachers Association. So, this needs all people presented to you on their behalf. Okay, last but not least, and this just occurred October 5th, 2018, at about 9:02 AM, an AED collapsed male. A 9/11 call was received reporting a collapsed male who was unresponsive at the Bridge Street, at Number One Bridge Street in the Village of Irvington. Police Officer Peter Warnicki, Police Officer Pat Christie, and Police Officer Jessica Hude dispatched and immediately responded. Without hesitation, officers of value were just seen and recognized the male had suffered from a heart attack. They began to try to take preventive measures by administering CPR and utilizing a department AED, which led to successfully restoring the patient's pulse. The patient was ultimately transported to a system metal, was sent to the county urgent volunteer ambulance court, in assistance of Greenberg, the Kansas Life Support Paramedic Bonnie, Iza. Lifesaving words to the following individuals, please come up. Officer Warnicki, Officer Christie, and Jessica is not here. It's down the aisle here. Okay, a watch for intelligently performing an outstanding act in a line of duty, with thorough prompt and alert actions resulting in the saving of life presented to these officers.
Congratulations to all the recipients, and thank you for everything you do every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Everybody stay safe out there, please.
All right, so, back to our regular scheduled meeting. First, we have announcements. One is that the holiday happening, which is all day, it says, I like that, and the holiday tree lighting ceremony on Saturday, December 1st, at 4:30 PM at the IK Benjamin Community Center, which is on 71 Main Street. I have a couple other holiday events to announce. This one came from Father Ashman at Immaculate Seventh Church. One tomorrow night, Tuesday, November 20th, is the Thanksgiving Interfaith Celebration, which is, there's, obviously, it's interfaith, so there are Aldersgate United Methodist Church, Greenberg Hebrew Center, Irvington Presbyterian Church, St. Barnabas Episcopal Church, and obviously ICC. We're all meeting tomorrow night at 7:30. I believe that's at Immaculate Conception. They're also having three churches and three concerts for Christmas, which is December 8th at Immaculate Conception at 7:30, December 9th at 4:00 PM at the Presbyterian Church, December 16th at 5:00 PM at the Episcopal Church. Additionally, there's a menorah lighting on December 2nd outside the firehouse at 4:00 I believe. And that's all the holiday-related announcements that I have for now, other than I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Next, we have a check over $25,000 pursuant to the village purchasing policy. It was for $143,354,000, and, $143,354.41, and that was for village paving, including East Sunny Side Lane, the PCI Industries. That was back at the beginning of November. Next, I would also, I would like to make a motion to have a public hearing, consider a local law to permit the adaptive reuse, reuse of historic buildings by a special permit on December 3rd, 2018, 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Marian, did you want to give a little bit of information?
Yeah, I'll try to make this as sure as I can. Unfortunately, it's a 10-page local law, and I'll go through it pretty quickly. What it is, is to follow up on one of the recommendations of the copper house and plant plan update. And overall, it modifies the uses permitted in the one-family districts, and then later on, I'll explain how it applies to the other district. One thing I should point out that might not be obvious from this is it deletes listed use, and right now, there's listed use, permitted uses in the one-family residential districts for lots having 1,000 feet of coverage on the east-toe side of Broadway and are at least 480,000 square feet. And there are no such lots. So, we're just taking that out to clean it up and using that section, those sections to see that you have this new use, adaptive reuse of historic buildings. Subject to the issuance of a special permit by the Board of Trustees, the building listed on the National Register of Historic Places are designated as a local landmark by the Village of Irvington pursuant to the law that it can do. May be used as an historical, educational, and/or cultural facility, including but not limited to tours, meeting rooms, and classrooms, exhibition, and archival space, gift shop space, kitchen facilities, and office space accessory to historic educational and/or cultural use. Such use may be in addition to a permitted residential use. So, it's fairly limited, only to designated houses, but it's a completely new use in the code. And then, then after that, the rest, most of what the law does is it modifies special permit standards and annals subsections E and F of that law. And right now, only the Planning Board grants special permits under this. It would be the Board of Trustees granting the special permits of the law. It would be revised to also cover the Board of Trustees. And then, it eliminates some duplication. There was some duplication between subsections E and F. Now, E deals only with the standards, and F deals only with procedure. It don't think standards, a little bit like, you know, requiring compliance with the New York State Fire Protection and Building Code. It would have to anyway, but it's just states of law. It does add, right now, there is no special permit provision for parking. This adds one, and says that adequate off-street parking must be provided for the size and type of activity proposed, and the parking can be provided on-site or in a body or reasonably nearby site. On process, it adds a few provisions. It requires the applicant to include a detailed description of the proposed use, it is the days and hours of operation, the number of people they expect might visit the site. And then, it also applies that provides the Board can require the applicant to provide a parking study to show how much traffic would, and parking would be generated by it. And also requires that a sign be posted on the property saying that the Board is considering granting a special permit. Right now, we have the provision for variances in site management, but we don't have it for special permits. This would add that. And then, it modifies the revocation section. There's a section on revoking special permits. Right now, it only provides for revoking them for not paying taxes. It adds that it can also be revoked for not complying with the terms of the special permit. And then, the final section, sections three to six, add the special permit use to the other districts, to the multifamily, the business, and the law front districts, so it could be any place where there's a designated house. It would apply to the two automatically because under our code, any use permitted in the one-family are permitted.
Have you made a motion? If I have a second to schedule a public hearing, all in favor? I should have mentioned also that County Kehoe isn't here tonight because her father-in-law passed away, 95 years old, World War II combat veteran, so lost another good one. One last item on the announcements is the Route 9 Traffic Corridor Study Committee had a, had a meeting on Saturday and Sunday. Have you guys attended? Give us an update?
Right, this was the presentation of the final conceptual design of the, of the Broadway corridor in terms of a complete streets kind of approach, where it had room for additional sidewalks, for bike lanes, for traffic calming measures such as three-lane conversion of Broadway, which in particular affects Irvington. Most of the other areas already have, villages already have three lanes on Broadway. And it was culmination of a grant from, I guess, that came about when the bridge was being, the new Tappan Zee Bridge, the new New York Bridge, whatever, was being built. The state had funds available, and they wanted to look at the impacts of mitigating some of the traffic changes, and that was looking at bike in terms of a complete streets kind of approach where it had room for additional sidewalks, for bike lanes, for traffic calming measures such as three-lane conversion of Broadway, which in particular affects Irvington. Most of the other areas already have, villages already have three lanes on Broadway. And it was culmination of a grant from, I guess it came about when the bridge was being, the new Tappan Zee Bridge, the new New York Bridge, whatever, was being built. The state had funds available and they wanted to look at the impacts mitigating some of the traffic changes. And that was looking at bike and pedestrian access. And in the coalition, it turns out that it was Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, Irvington, Tarrytown, and Sleepy Hollow that all came together to work on that grant. And they had a consulting firm working with them, collected a lot of information, had a lot of public feedback. And anyways, the plans were presented, I don't plans were, the conceptual plans were presented on a Saturday. So the next step, which if I understand Larry, would be that the coalition would then approach with these plans, I guess the Department of Transportation or something, and say, here's our unified plans. And then, you know, the question of how do you go from conceptual plans to final engineering documents? How do you stage, you know, most likely DOT will be working with individual villages to build out segments? What else can I say about it? That's it. It's all, the final report is available online on the village website.
Yep.
And...
I just want to acknowledge that you all spent, you spent a lot of time representing our village on this committee.
And the only other point of process, the traffic committee is going to be meeting right after Thanksgiving and looking, there's a few issues that we saw on the final plans that sort of fell through the feedback process. So we're just documenting those so that when this does go forward to DOT, that they'll have a list of some of the issues that are missing from the Irvington segment.
Hurry up. Any other announcements? Otherwise, we'll move on to correspondence. And actually, former trustee Ken Bernstein is the only piece of correspondence we have. And it's been in regards to the public hearing tonight, so I'm gonna hold that over until the public hearing. And then I'll open it up for public comments for anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Anybody? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. I don't know if anybody has any questions on these.
I just had a question about the definition of an enhanced peddler's permit as opposed to...
An enhanced what is for the food truck? What is the enhanced peddler's permit?
So a food truck requires enhancement.
Or is it the ice cream truck?
I can double-check in the village code. That's how it's defined in the village code.
Yeah.
I can pull it up and see exactly what it is.
Just curious.
Do we also make a motion to briefly present the agenda? I guess second? All of them?
Aye.
Now, this is a presentation of audit of financial statements for 2017, 2018.
I'd like to present Susan Barosi from the firm O'Connor Davies.
Give me another degree.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Susan's been doing the, the village's audit for some time now.
Mm-hmm. Yes, for some time. Marian, my team, and my co-partner Scott Orley. So I'm Susan Barosi from the firm PKF O'Connor Davies. I was here in August to perform the audit of the financial statements for the year ended May 31st, 2018. I was here with a manager, supervisor, and senior accountants, not only to perform the audit of the village itself, but also to review the statements of cash receipts and disbursements for the justice court. So all of you have the 107-page document, which is the financial statements, which a majority of it was performed, was prepared by management. We took the trial balances of finance team of the village and put it into our software to present, to prepare the 107-page document. We are not going to go through all 107 pages this evening. We'll be here past Thanksgiving if that would, that would happen, right? So, but what we're going to do is highlight some areas of the financials. If you look at the document itself, there is a report in it called the Independent Orders Report. And that report is the only page of the financial statements that has PKF O'Connor Davies logo on the top. Basically, you know, the opinion of the financial statements has grown as well. It's three pages in this document. But it's the Independent Orders Report, and this is the only page we own. And what this states, and I'll go into more detail, is the fact that we, the firm, came in and performed the audit of the statements. You have to realize that the village is comprised of many funds. It's a general fund, it's the operational fund. You have a water fund, capital projects fund, in which all your multiple capital projects run through. You have a debt service fund, which records the revenues and the expenses pertaining to the debt service, expenses being the payments. You have a public library fund, sewer fund, cable TV fund, and a special purpose fund. So it takes a lot of work, as you all are aware, to run this village. And in the 107 pages, there basically are two statements, right? So there are the fund level statements, which you're, you're on the modified accrual basis in which the budget is based on for the village. And then there what they call the entity-wide statements, which are full accrual statements. I'm going to be focusing basically this evening on the general fund, which is the operational fund. And I'm going to focus on the fund level statements, which is what your budget is based upon. So going back to the opinion, the first paragraph states that, you know, we, the firm, we're need the financial statements. And that these financial statements are the responsibility of management. And that all responsibility is to audit the financial statement in accordance with government auditing standards and generally accepted, to ensure that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Throughout that process, what we do is we test the internal controls to see, you know, every year, yes, although it's been a few years, which the firm has audited these financials, however, there's been rotation with audit teams. But every year, the village presents, we have these internal controls, and these internal controls are in place. Well, as you just said, in your own finances, you could say you have controls in place. But what we have to do is to test the internal controls to see, number one, do they really exist? And if we can rely on those internal controls. And then in, those are more or less compliance tests. But in addition to that, we do substantive tests, like bank confirmations, liability confirmations, test of receipts, of disbursements, to validate, you know, confirmations of payable balances, to validate that, you know, the assets and liabilities really exist. And the end, what, at the end of the process, which is a pretty lengthy process, we, as a firm, issue an opinion. And now it's called not an unqualified opinion. The new terminology is an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest opinion that a village can receive and is what the Village of Irvington has received, the cleanest opinion. Now, we're going to go through certain, certain aspects of the village finances to show how the village earned this opinion, this unmodified opinion. So if you turn in the financial statements to page 67, as I said, we're, tonight, we're going to focus on the operational fund, which is the general fund. But on 67 and 68, this is the balance sheet for the general fund of the village. And you're going to see that there are like two columns added together to come up with, arrive at 2018. The general fund's in one column, but the, now the ambulance service awards assets, which is a pension plan program, which is for the voluntary ambulance...
Volunteer in the ambulance corps.
Core. What they do is that they have a pension plan, that these are the assets of the plan. And due to the fact that these assets are also available for creditors in case something happened in the future, there is a, what they call Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 73, which says now that these assets have to be combined in with the, with the village's general fund. The liability, which is the liability which is obtained through an actuary report, which we, which the village gets that actuary, is an independent actuary, independent of O'Connor Davies. That liability is not shown here on these statements because, as I said, there are these full accrual statements, which, because they're not near-term, inflows and outflows this liability, just like the other post-employment benefit liability goes on these full accrual statements. So we're going to focus on this first column, which is the general fund, which shows that the assets of the village exclusive of the ambulance is 12 million. This does not include capital assets. These are on the full accrual statements. And the liabilities are 6.5 million with a fund balance, which is the equity of 5.4 million. The assets, such as the capital assets, any bonds payable, liabilities such as that, on what they call these full accrual statements. But this is what the budget is based on. So going to the next page of the statements, these, this is the, really the revenues and the expenses, the scheduled revenues and expenditures for the general fund, with the fire service awards program, the ambulance service awards program to come up, arrive at a consolidated statement. But to look at the revenues and expenses of the village, let's go to page 72. I know we hit many pages, but I just wanted to explain, in case you were referring to the report later, you'll understand why there's, you know, general fund is consolidated now with the ambulance service awards. So if you look at page 72, this is the comparative schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the general fund itself. And go to the bottom in four lines up. The first column is the original budget, which is what your, the original budget, which was adopted. The final budget includes any modifications which were approved by the board to the original budget throughout the year. What we do as an audit firm is we don't test every single modification, but we do a test to see some of those certain modifications go from original to final to see if they were board-approved. And then we go backtrack from final to original. We're testing both ways to see that the modifications were approved. The next is the actual column, what actually occurred. And the next column is the variance, which is the variance from the actual, what actually occurred, to what the final budget, okay? Some would ask, why don't you go from actual to original? Well, this is what the standards say we have to do, I have to do compared to the final budget. Okay. Now, if we go three lines up, original budget, yes, this budget is balanced, but there's a planned use of fund balance, which is, so if it's balanced, you say, well, why does it show a use of 334,000 of that equity? Well, in the prior year, there was 175,000 designated to be applied to 2018 to balance the budget.
Offset the taxes.
Yes.
Offset the tax levy.
Offset the tax levy. And any, so in order to balance the revenues and the expenditures, which here, it's 17.1 in revenues, but then that's made up of 14 million in taxes and other revenues. To offset those, the expenses, 175,000 of fund balance was planned to be used, which was carried forward for the prior year. Also, encumbrances, which is a governmental term of issued and outstanding purchase orders in which invoices hadn't been received in the prior year, of 158,000. So there was a planned use of 334,000. During the year, there were budget modifications. Modifications not only to the revenue side, but to the expense side, planning a use of 491,000 of fund balance. However, what occurred, and we go to the third column, only 81,821 was needed of the fund balance in order to balance the budget. Meaning, the revenues less the expenditures was a net decrease of 81,821 dollars. What does that, what does that mean? Well, when you have the final budget of 491, final budget was a use of 491,000, plus what actually happened of 81,821 was only needed of the fund balance to balance the budget. There was a $410,000 positive variance. That's a very small variance when you think about the overall size of the budget. And how did we arrive at that? And I've asked Brenda if she would chime in with me as I explain, as I explain that. So, the final budget was 17.2, 17.2 million, which was made up of 14 million of real property taxes and non-property taxes of 1.1 million, some departmental income in various other revenue items. However, what actually happened was there was actually 17.4 million positive, actually more revenues than expected in the final budget, arriving at a positive variance of 153,000. Which, you know what, that's a very small number compared to a 17.2 million dollar budget, right? However, it's always good to have a positive variance in revenues. And it's always good to budget your revenues conservatively because if you don't hit your revenue target, where else are you going to be able to balance, balance your budget? Either you're going to have expenditure savings, or you're going to go into your equity. Just as in your own finances. If your revenue doesn't come in, what do you have to do? You have to, you know, tighten your belt, can't spend as much, and you have to go into your savings, right? So there was 153,000. That...
You can see that the revenues were very strong. You can see that you have two negatives in that line. The first one is the real property tax of 232,000. That was really due to small claims that were settled by Greenberg after we did our tax levy.
Yes.
So if it wasn't for having those, those claims that came in, they're like grievances, basically, we would have had a higher amount of revenue coming in. But that was an unusual one. It was a result of when they did the revaluation. And it was the first year that they had scars, they call them, small claims adjustments, small claims court.
And they, they go against the current year revenues because it was a payment during the current year pertaining to the current year revenues. Then the, there's a positive variance in what's called non-property taxes, which consists of sales tax and franchise fees came in higher. And all the detail of all of these revenue and expenditure variances, which I'm going through, I'll understand, are on page 74 on, which takes every single revenue item in an expenditure item and breaks it down between original, final, actual, and variance. So that positive of the 128,000 was sales tax and franchise fees. Then departmental income, there was, came in slightly less, about 72,000 dollars.
It had to do with the timing of, we received money from the East Irvington Fire District, and they had paid for two years and the year prior.
Year prior.
So it didn't reflect in this current year.
So the positive variance, 153,000 dollars. Then if you look at the expenditures, then the expenditures, final budget was 15.42 million. And actual came in at 15.1 million. It's very, you know, it takes a lot of work for these departments to come in so close. So there was a positive variance of 257,000. Basically made up of transportation of 95,000 of positive variance, and a positive variance of culture and recreation of 65,000, and some, a few other items to arrive at the 257. Those of the total expenditures. Then what, if you look at the, come all the way down, so therefore your revenues, less your expenditures, and less your other financing uses, which are your transfers out, we arrive at 81,821 use of fund balance. Add to the beginning fund balance, you have, an ending fund balance of 5.4 million, okay? That 5.4 million is detailed. It's not all free and clear. That is basically the equity of the general fund. But that whole 5.54 million, plus the ambulance fund, which I told you was consolidated in. Look on page 57. So when you add the ambulance fund in, you arrive at a total fund balance of 6.1 million. Basically, this is comparing the fund balance for 2018 to 2017. And there's what they call non-spendable, so, meaning this whole fund balance is not free and clear. Non-spendable would be prepaid expenditures of 198,000. Advances, which those advances are basically covering the deficits in the cable TV fund and the water fund, right? There are slight deficits in those funds that the, the village is trying to work through by, with revenues coming in. So therefore, that's non-spendable piece of the fund balance. There's restricted for service awards, the 697, that's the ambulance service awards. So those assets are not touched because those assets are part of that fund balance, but to be used... but to be used for the ambulance service awards. Then your encumbrances, right, multiple encumbrances of 251,000, amount designated to balance 2019 of 175,000, and then the unassigned fund balance of 4.6 million, okay? So that, for a rainy day. Now, that unassigned fund balance, basically, is slightly less than the unassigned from the previous year, which was 4.8 million. So there's a lot of consistency. So, as I said, that there are other funds, so at the end, you arrive at the 6.1 million, which includes the ambulance awards, however, you know, you ended the year in a very healthy position with slight variances, but positive variances in both the revenue area and the expenditure area, okay? But as I said, there are other, other funds, but one of them is the Capital Projects Fund, which I think is worthy of pointing out. And if you go to page 82, the financials. Page 82 of the financials, you have the balance sheet of the Capital Projects Fund, which is where all the projects are run through, and the total assets of that are $4 million. But there's a bond anticipation notes payable there of 5.6, that's basically short-term financing for the, the bond anticipation note. And the Capital Project Fund has a deficit of 1.9 million. You have to realize, that short-term financing, when it's converted into long-term financing, and those revenues come in, that deficit will-
Disappears.
Disappears.
Not a real deficit. It's a deficit because the band is a short-term financing, so it's taken the current representation company.
Exactly. But this fund represents, and just so you go to page 84, 85, 86, 87, and 88, basically all the multiple projects that the, the village is undertaking. We have many projects there, many projects there. And all the way to the right, where you're looking at all those pages, which details all of the projects, shows the, that band, the 5.6 million, what that bond anticipation, what those notes are representing, what, what they are covering, right? Another, then, then there are other funds that, just so you can see, one of the funds I had referred to, smaller fund, page 103, the cable TV fund. And this, that's a small fund with, if you look at page 103, basically, you know, very small fund, small deficit of 90,000, which, as the revenues come in, the deficit is reduced.
Well, this was planned. This is where we had provided money in advance of the revenue to help offset the building of, I guess, a TV station and broadcasting.
Yeah, in conjunction with the school district, so it's-
Right. Very small. Very small. So at the end of the audit process, and as you see, there are many funds here, the village ended up with a positive fund balance, healthy comparison of when you're looking at what actually happened compared to your budget. And a separate letter was issued, which had what we call a management letter, which lists any, since we tested internal controls, anything that came, we came across as, as a result of testing the internal controls. There are different levels of deficiencies that, that we could put these, any weaknesses in internal controls in, different buckets. The first would be material weakness, there were no material weaknesses. The next would have been significant, significant deficiencies, there were no significant deficiencies. The things we call, the last is called control deficiencies, which were basically housekeeping in nature, and which are detailed in this separate report here, and which management has responded to. So, so in the 107 pages, that represents an entire year, and entire finance team's work, entire board's work, entire department's work, and residents' work, in order to arrive at such success, okay?
I would just want to also point out that the unassigned fund balance now represents 26% of the village, of the general fund revenues. So it's pretty much our target, we don't like to exceed that. So the slight deficit, or the deficit, but the slight decrease in fund balance was really planned, and it's really bringing it in line to where we want it.
Exactly. Exactly.
I'll say that it's work all year. You can't cram for an audit. You've done your work all year, or you have it.
Right.
And I want to also know, also acknowledge the different department heads and the staff at the finance office, who are really doing, helping along with the process, and everyone doing their job all year.
And, and what I feel is very positive is, you know, at the end of the process, when we left the field, we came back and had, you know, a very detailed discussion with Lowery, Brenda, the team, the team's very cooperative, went through everything, also had many conversations, even with the independent actuaries for the fire service, as well as the ambulance awards, so, and the village attorney, right? So a lot of work goes into this, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Do you want to do anything on the justice court?
Oh, the justice, it was separate?
Yeah, we do that. I also did a resolution right after, so we formally accept that.
Right, a separate statement was issued on the justice court, a statement catch receipts and discursments. Also, there was a management letter comments, basically that there's some outstanding-
Bail, which actually they've taken care of.
Right.
It was, they had on the books some, I guess, outstanding age bail monies that had to be disposed of, decided as to disposition.
Right.
So they did take care of that.
And then, as in every justice court, where you have outstanding parking summonses, which you're trying to collect, right? So that, that was in there as well.
They had adjudicated ones, so it was, can they make also a determination if they were collectible or not, as to get them off the books. Basically, I think, Kristi Silverberg, you had a question on, just going over this at all? This was going to be a statement, this was the justice court one, did you ask, did you do anything on it?
Oh, no, I just asked at the beginning.
At the beginning.
Right. This is clear in context. And then the outstanding parking summons, those are not, like, there is no receivable for those, because you, because it's not your term inflows and outflows, but we have to, they have, the justice court has a tracking of what's outstanding in order to monitor, you know, the collections of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Old CPA, always enjoying that. They have got a lot longer one.
[inaudible].
Anyone have any comments or questions on the financial statements, or on the justice court's report? Otherwise, resolved to accept the annual justice court report issued by PKF Connor-Davies LLP for the 2017-18 fiscal year, I make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the public hearing, to consider local opportunity downtown parking regulations, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing if I have a second. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
You've also been working on these for many, many months. Tonight is kind of our formal presentation to the public, after all, our informal presentations to the public. And then after that, it's pretty much a listening for, this is our first chance to hear from the public on these, these changes. I think that we realized that, one, this is long overdue, two, this is much more difficult than it appeared on the face. Three, every time we change one thing to try to make something better, sometimes it has a whack-a-mole effect, and it makes it worse over here. So I think that that's why it's been literally 80 years since anyone's tried to do anything about it, and none of our signs match, and, you know, literally nothing happens. So, you know, I think we've, we've looked at this, we tried to change things, we thought it might be easier to change small things one at a time, and then we realized that if you did that, you couldn't do that, because then that really screwed things up, you have to kind of deal with it as a group. You know, and we've, we've had some grand plans, we've had some small plans, and now we have this plan. We look forward to hearing from the public. As far as timing on this, this is obviously the first public hearing. We are not voting on anything tonight, there's not even a resolution here. You know, we're going to be listening, I would say there'll be several meetings, and I'm guessing what is final capacity will be very different to the document that's in front of us right now. I'm hoping we can do something to alleviate some of the issues that are kind of known, you know, but I won't say that I'm not hopeful, but I'm, I'm hopeful we'll have an excellent open process, and hopefully make some improvements in the next several months. With that, I will maybe turn it over to Mary Ann to-
I can probably run through. I'll just give a high-level-
Sure, that's perfect.
High-level presentation of the, of the changes that are being proposed. So really going back, there are two main topics of discussion that gave rise to the, to the changes that we have here. As, as the mayor said, you know, we might have started in one area, and we ended up in another area for a variety of reasons, but I'm not planning to go through the history of that. But just to say, just to say that initially, the discussion started with, with the idea of permitting overnight parking on the streets in the downtown. The code, the current village code says that no one is allowed to park for more than an hour between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM on any street in the village, except certain streets. And there was no, no rational basis for which streets were included and which ones weren't, other than most of the ones that allowed overnight parking were in the downtown area, but not all of them. So we explored that and got into a discussion about that, and the board, through a series of work sessions, came to the conclusion that they wanted to pursue allowing overnight parking on the streets, on all of the streets in the downtown that are enumerated in this law, and, you know, we can certainly go through each one, but not, not right now. That led to further discussion about the fact that the parking time limits on the side streets, for the most part, are six hours, limited to six hours. The six-hour number is, is a number that is, allows a long enough time for a resident to park their car in the street without having to worry about moving it, but it's short enough to be uncomfortable for a regular, all-day commuter that wants to use the train station to park on the street. I mean, that's historically where that six-hour limit comes from. Six hours is also comfortable enough for an employee of a Main Street business to park without having to move their car more than once, for the most part. So, but that, that six-hour limit long predates the existence of the resident parking permit tag, which if those of you are probably here that you live in the downtown, know what that is. And that is the, the resident tag that allows you to park on the street between essentially daylight hours during the week, and in excess of any posted time limits on the side streets, not on Main Street itself, but on the side streets. So anyone that lives in the downtown area is, including people who live on Main Street, are eligible for a resident tag, they're sold at a relatively nominal fee of $25 a year. But the idea is that this, that legislation dates back to the early 2000s, required a special act of the state legislature to allow that permit to come into effect, and it was a significant relief for the residents of the downtown area. What that means is, and this is where the, the tale keeps going, what that means is that the, the time limits on the side streets essentially could be much shorter than what they are currently posted, and there'd be no impact to the residents that live on those side streets. You already have a tag available to you that you can park on the side street in excess of six hours, or two hours, or whatever the proposal may be. And so that led to a further discussion of wanting to create further turnover of parking in the downtown area. So in addition to Main Street, which was one hour, but is now two hours parking, it would allow for the unused spaces on the side streets, when residents aren't parked there, to, those spaces would continue to turn over and, and effectively add to the inventory of parking available to our Main Street businesses. That was the, that was the theory. So those were the, those are the, the two main areas. So overnight parking somehow led to a discussion of hourly limits on the side streets, and parking turnover, and parking availability to the, to the Main Street businesses. One additional thread from the sweater that started pulling out is that if you do lower the hourly limits on the side streets, the employees who are in large part already parking on the side streets, having to go out and move their car after six hours, those employees would not have parking available in large part in the downtown area. So there's a further provision to, to create a, similar to the resident parking tag, a very limited basis issuance of an employer parking tag for use by a limited number of And that's, that's essentially the framework of the proposal. I mean, certainly the specifics are in the laws, and we can answer questions or, or concerns that anyone has, but that's, that's the structure of what's being changed. It takes a lot of pages, as you've seen from other local laws, it takes a lot of pages to describe and make those changes, but that, those are, in essence, the proposals that we have.
Yes, you know, yeah. First, does anyone up here want to speak, otherwise I'll read former trustee Bernstein's letter.
No, I just want to say that I'm, I guess I do want to say, one thing is, I support in general the outline of the changes. I'm still very concerned about the businesses with more than a couple of employees, which include restaurants and include some other service facilities and so on. I just, I know the answer was that there may be additional permits available, but I'm still concerned about, I'd like to hear more from the businesses, how they, what their actual needs are. And I think, in fact, we will hear from Ken about his needs, not weekday, but weekend. So I'll segue with you. Thanks, Brian.
I'll segue, I like that. Dear Larry, Mayor and trustees, I'm writing on behalf of myself and my wife, Deborah, business owners on Main Street regarding revised downtown parking regulations. Thank you for the notices about these proposed changes, which were received by email and mail. We are unable to attend the November 19 meeting, so wanted to submit these comments in advance. Overall, we are very much in favor of the revised parking regulations and look forward to their implementation. We think the idea of unifying parking limits on various streets, including two hours in the central Main Street area, and issuing permits to residents and area employees for up to two permits are both great ideas, so long as there's parking elsewhere to accommodate businesses with greater number of employees. Our main concern relates to Saturdays. Our squint, optometry, and law practice businesses are both open on Saturdays, which for squints is generally our busiest day. I believe that many other Main Street businesses are also open on Saturdays. It appears that from section 213-10A, that the two-hour limit on Main Street would now be exempted on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, whereas it was previously exempted only on Sunday and Sundays and holidays. We frequently hear complaints from clients about difficulty in finding parking near our businesses, although we can't recall offhand whether the complaints are more or less on Saturdays. So while these changes, your proposal should help to alleviate parking problems generally, we question whether the time limits on Main Street, at least in the central business area, should continue to be imposed on Saturdays. In this regard, I agree with section 213-29.8A, does not allow residents or employees with parking permits to be exempt from the parking limits on Main Street, but I'm not sure how section 213-29.8A interacts with section 213-10A, and I don't think this addresses our concern. Thank you, Ken Bernstein, attorney of law, and squinting and optometry, to the Main Street. That will open it up to public comments. First hand up.
I think we represent another group that hasn't been heard, is the people who don't live downtown, residents who, they get permits, but we live up in Field Point, and it's become, and friends, it's very difficult to get a space after 10 o'clock to take a train into the city. And a lot of people are not only retired, but independent contractors, and really need to do that, but not on a regular commuting basis. So we wanted to put in, you know, if you reduce the hours less than six and the spaces, already we've come down and there might be only one space left. already we've come down and there might be only one space left. What you all might not know, though, is I participate in a number of groups, and they're Rockland residents. And I've heard a number of them saying that Irvington has become very attractive for them to come across the bridge and park here. It's safe, it's not like Tarrytown, and they're taking the spaces. And I didn't say anything at the time, because I'm friends with them, but, you know, I think there's a bigger problem here than just what's been, what I've seen addressed. And I was thinking that the park permits, that we have to get, you know, to use the park, Madison Park and all, improve for residents so that other people don't use it, you know, we pay the taxes and everything, that maybe there's a way also, although it's administratively more headache, to issue permits, one per house, I don't know, two per house, to, for people who don't live in the immediate area of the downtown. So that might be a solution.
If, can I just say something? So you're saying a resident permit that would indicate you're a resident of Irvington and entitled to the six-hour-
To the six-hour, just the six-hour.
Right. So that that would exclude people who are driving in-
Yeah, because there are a lot of people, everybody's hungry for parking spaces, and they're coming across the bridge.
I don't know if that, I mean, I think it would require an act of the legislature. Because there's, because the way New York State views it is, we're very parochial on Mrs. Irvington, but-
Oh, dear.
It's New York State, if anybody wants to park there, it's a public street. So that's, I think that's kind of the, that's the view, hence why we need, we needed an act of legislature, even to have residents park on the streets in front of themselves.
Yeah, I heard that, that sounded right.
Actually, the law is fairly interesting where it's not very liberally applied. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't just say now, we're gonna, you know, create, we already have the downtown ones. We actually were talking about having different zones and things, and we weren't sure, and we were talking about that, if we needed another act of legislature just for that. If we said, say it was like the western part of Main Street and the eastern part of Main Street, if we could even have, say, separate parking permits that way. So, you know, you couldn't have it by, you know, zones of streets, and we didn't know if we were allowed to even do that, which is less than kind of making a village-wide kind of resident parking, if that makes sense.
No, it does make sense. It's a really tough problem, because, you know, if you reduce another six-hour spaces, I guess there's a lot of focus on the business owners, which are important.
Yeah, and I think one of the things we were talking about is, and actually, I take, I actually don't, I've been on the waiting list ironically for a train permit since January.
On regular commute.
And in arts leave, so it's kind of ironic that the mayor can't get a parking permit. But-
There's no favoritism.
No favoritism, I guess that's-
Fantastic.
Damn it. But, so we actually, I actually use the six-hour spots a lot, and my wife comes and moves the car, and it's, she's not very happy about it. But, you know, we were actually, Jen and I were talking about it, and I think one of the things we were talking about is, obviously, there's going to be the potential for spillover from the old six-hour spots that are now two-hour spots to the other six-hour spots that are lower. But we were saying, like, I've driven around in the mornings sometimes, much longer than I wished, but I've never parked north of, like, Buckout Street. It might be all the way down, up in the six-hour spots, but I've never gone up to, like, you know, Fair Street and parked for six hours.
Yeah, we've had to a couple of times.
So, you know, I think that we were talking about kind of having, you know, how far up is it, is it practical and things like that as well? Like, you know, if it was six hours at the top of Main Street, I don't think anyone's going to park up there in Long River View as well sometimes, but when it's nice out. So it's definitely something that we're still actively considering, how many streets we need. And I think frankly, if we do change it, the nice thing is, we can change it again. So if it turns out that it was, you know, a disaster or something, we could always change it back. And I think that a lot of these things, I mean, there's probably an issue with it that we haven't even thought of yet.
Yeah.
You know, and I think the nice thing is that, you know, it's a month, it takes about a month to post it and change it, but we can keep tweaking this until we get it right or get it better.
That's nice. And I think that's like our fear on Buckout, is that if we're gonna have six-hour parking, and we're the only street that has it-
Oh, yeah, you've got fun.
Then everybody's going to be where we are.
That's right.
We already have the post office, we have a lot.
So the law is proposed-
So like, I'm worried about, I'm worried about that, it's really, I think it's big. A lot of people in my lot don't have any-
Let me just clarify one thing, and I want you to have your comments, obviously. The law is currently proposed, and I guess I kind of left this out in my summary, so I apologize. Yeah. You should give me a nudge. The law is currently proposed maintains the six-hour parking on, I believe it's North and South Buckout Street, Main Street and Cottonet, and Main Street west of Cottonet as well, which is what it currently is now. So anyway, so it's multiple streets.
Anyway, so that's why I knew that, but I mean, that's what our fear is, and we already are, wow.
And even if you have the pass, you lose your spot.
Yeah, I have to get your names also, sorry.
So my neighbor here's a teacher, and when she comes home from school, she can never find a place to park.
You've got to use the mic.
Yeah, may I speak on behalf of North Buckout Street and South Buckout? Oh, I'm Kate Croll, I live at Fort North Buckout, and I want to represent some concerns that I have. My husband, Tom Thacker, he's not able to be at this meeting, we share these concerns. And I know that a lot of our neighbors do as well. The village for 24 years, and I have seen parking on North Buckout become really bad. The situation on North Buckout is quite bad. I like to, you know, share with you what it's like to live there. In the morning, when I leave, there are cars that immediately come in and take my spot. People, if I happen to be home later during the, during the morning, then typical, I can see, you know, 8:30, 9:00, people racing down Buckout, going to either meet trains or get down to park on Bridge Street. When I come home from work, and it can depend, I'm a high school teacher, and it can be any time from 3:30 to 5:30, depending on meetings, it's not uncommon for me to have to circle, and circle two, three, four times. And sometimes have to park on another street and then bring my car down. So it's really concerning to us, and we feel it will be a complete Buckout six hours. It will push, I think, I appreciate the work that you're doing, I appreciate the complexity of it, and I think that a two-hour limit is, it makes a lot of sense, but not if you start to divide it up among the side streets. It doesn't take, you know, a lot of creative thinking to think that, to understand that what's going to happen is that people will, of course, park in a place where they can park for longer. And it will make a situation that's already really challenging worse, and we feel convinced of it. And so we, we wouldn't like the parking problem to be solved on the back of, you know, North and South Buckout. It's not a clear way to deal with the issue.
I have the other half, Nancy Lindsay here, Gary Fay. And we're, well, we're, my only comment is, we're both retired, but we'd like to go in the city, usually late in the morning. You know, oftentimes we'd maybe go to theater or whatever, and you know, you need one, two hours to do that. And in my case, I have to go to the Wild Cornell once a month for medical treatment. And so I usually get my appointments 11:30 or 1 o'clock or something, but I can't get to my, go in the city, go to the doctor, and then come back in two hours. I mean, so then I run the risk now, and we've been noticing it's been tougher and tougher to find a six-hour parking when we leave in the morning. And so now you run the risk of maybe not finding a parking spot, and now you, what are you going to do? Where are you going to put the car? So you have to go back, I guess, run it, or get a taxi to come down? You know, it becomes a problem. So now we're looking at taking a taxi both ways. I mean, we're residents of the city, we've been here 24 years. What's going on? I mean, this, we like Irvington, it's a community, we enjoy, we feel a part of it, but now all of a sudden, you know, now it's not really accessible to us, the town, or we can't depend on getting a parking spot. So, I don't know, that's a concern we have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I, I, my name's Anne Otchison, I live at 18 South Dutcher Street. And I brought you guys a show and tell that comes with a quiz, so you don't have to either look at it or take the quiz right now, but I'll hand it out.
That takes the pressure off, then, Anne, thank you.
So I did a little drawing of my street, with all the houses in green, and all the driveways in orange, and all the accessory buildings in purple. And I counted up the number of people who live there and their cars. I've lived on the street since 1998, so I pretty much have a good idea of whose cars are whose at this point, especially now that I work from home. And I go to job sites on a regular basis, but with irregular timing. So like the teacher, sometimes I leave early, sometimes I leave medium, sometimes I get back at lunchtime, sometimes I get back at seven. So just like the people in Buckout, we're continually, continually, continually not able to find space on our street to park anywhere near our house. So I know that this is the third rail of Irvington, I know that every single street and every side of the street is different, but I just wanted to show you guys the case study from South Dutcher. So, and the thing I want to focus on is the number of, the number of permits that you're going to issue. I think the hours of parking are maybe a slightly different question, but on our street, there's an inordinate number of people who have cars who park on the street without any other opportunity to park anywhere. So this is in the historic district, and at the end of our street, there's a few houses, which you can see on the left, on the top, the west side, the one, the three with driveways are newer houses, and all of them have garages. So, but many, most of the houses on our street are two-family or multifamily houses. And some are owned by people who live in the house with a tenant in another apartment, and some are owned by absentee landlords. So you have situations where you have one, so this is where I've been trained well by Mary Ann Stedtits to pay attention to words. So I think that one of the things you need to think about is the number of permits per quote-unquote "household." And be very careful about how you're going to define a household. So is it a house? Is it a dwelling unit within a house? Or is it, if, you know, just a residence? So you say in here that the permit, one permit per household, which I'm not sure, I looked through the code to see where that was defined, and it sounded like in other places, it might apply to a tenant living within a house. So one building might have two households in it, or three, but you don't define that. So it says, "The owner or tenant of a residential dwelling whose primary residence is in the restricted parking zone area." And you can get one permit if you fall into that category. And then it says later, if there's no driveway, you can get up to two, if you have two cars. So then that's where the quiz comes in. So, so, I mean, I won't go through this whole map, I wrote down in exhaustive detail about, you know, what the different situations are. There's a couple of old barns, there's at least two, what I'm calling decommissioned driveways, one of which was allowed by the planning board at Pat Ryan's house because the driveway is too narrow, and one of which is behind this, the two, the shared driveways next to the Sunnyside parking lot. It's an open barn in the back that functions as a garage. And so the places where there's decommissioned driveways, i.e. it not being used as a driveway anymore, even though there's a curb cut, I'm advocating that those be made into parking spaces, because you could add two spaces on our street just by doing that. And then there's one space that's big enough for two cars that should be divided, so that would be three, but anyway, never mind that. That's all written down here. You can see, this was a labor of love that I did.
Are those the illegal spaces, the three illegal spaces?
Yeah, yeah.
I was worrying about those, right?
Yeah. So right now, they're illegal, but we all park in them, and so the police never give us tickets, except for one time, a stranger called the police and somebody got a ticket. But after that, it was all, all good. Anyway, so the quiz-
Just trying to get on that yet.
Yeah. No, it was, anyway, so the quiz, so I have a local law quiz here for you that just makes, is trying to make you think about who gets a permit and how many, okay? So that's the second page, it's stable to you. So I gave you examples of things where you have a two-family residence with an owner and a tenant, the owner does not allow the tenant to park in the driveway, even though there's ample parking for everyone in the driveway, who gets a permit and how many? And then another one is a multifamily residence with three apartments, the owner lives elsewhere, every apartment is occupied, every apartment has, let's say, two, I said, two cars, two cars, one car, that's five cars, who gets a permit and how many? And then there's a third example, which is, you have a multifamily home with an owner and two tenants, no driveway, the tenant, the owner themselves has two cars, and then the tenants have cars, who gets a permit and how many? And then the fourth example is these, this shared driveway thing, where one of the dwellings that shares the driveway is a single family, one is a two-family owned by someone else with two tenants, everyone has a car, the barn only has space for two cars, the drive, there's no place to turn around, everybody has to back out, so it's not feasible for two separate non-related people, let alone three separate non-related people, to share that, who gets a permit and how many?
Please, thank you, Anne. Sir? You have a hand up?
Thank you. I'm Arthur Seguero, I live at 10 North Buckout, I'm neighbor of the Fieritos, and also with Kate. And I just wanted to, I had come to the original discussion about this, and I drafted a letter of concerns to all you guys, and I appreciate everything you're doing. And by the way, I appreciate your summary, Mr. Shofar, that was very clear, so thank you for that. Very worried about North Buckout Street, obviously. I hear the concerns from other people who are the day trippers in, and I understand their need as well. It's a very real thing, and it must be an awesome task to sit there and hear everyone with valid concerns. So that said, I'm going to put our concerns out there, which is, North Buckout is a very unique street in my book. It's not like every other side street. We have the post office, we have the restaurant, we have the park access, it's a thoroughfare, people kind of come through to get to Bridge Street, rarely do they go down to Astor. Keeping it a six-hour time limit and changing the other streets to two-hour, essentially you've carved out a commuter parking lot in the lower zone, which is going to make our lives much more complicated than they have already been. North Buckout Street, I think, keeping it a six-hour time limit is also contributing to the safety issues. There are real safety issues on Buckout Street because of that six-hour time lot, meaning that because the lots, these spots are all taken, people come to the post office looking to drop off their packages, to do their business at the post office, they double park in lanes, driveway, with, they're not really in, they're kind of double parked, they get out on the passenger side, cars come whizzing by because there are no spots, and I've seen very close calls there. People consistently park in front of the hydrant, which to me is a safety issue for my home, if something happens, I want that hydrant accessible immediately. And more often than not, it's in front of the hydrant, and then in front of that car as well. That's a safety issue. People have, I've seen people park on, their noses go in towards the end, near the bushes, where it's illegal to park, the scooter parking, they'll, two, three cars sometimes go right there. So North Buckout is not a typical side street. It's a, it's a very busy road, the, I think the parking needs to be turned over more regularly to access, so that people have access to the post office and to the restaurant. So please take that into consideration, and if you're going to change the other blocks to two hours, just realize that you're creating a commuter parking lot for us, and the quality of our-
You know, it is sort of a commuter parking lot.
It is, and the quality of life is, we're going to be jettisoned if you do that.
Regardless of changing anything, I have asked the traffic officer to go through there more often, because, I mean, I think anybody who drives through there sees the anarchy by the post office. So I have asked them to, you know, issue more tickets, because you don't have to, you have to give- You don't give the time of day it happens, because it's pretty much any time you drive through, there's something going on.
You know, I also think, Brian, I think like the GPS sends people like down...
Down that way rather than down...
Yeah, because it's shorter to go over the bridge. It's really...
It's ten seconds shorter.
It's really...
In that no-truck sign, I don't know what that's there for.
Yeah, the trucks go down the bridge. They use their GPS. They don't know what they're doing.
So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Peter. Anyway, I absolutely sympathize with you because I walked down Main Street today. And as I went to cross Buckout, a car came zooming down Main Street so close to the corner that it practically hit me. And I really think you need speed bumps.
I actually thought you'd bet hoping it curved.
You did, yeah, yeah. It was really like you're just about to step off the curb, and it's shocking, but you know, I was almost hit. I have a separate, maybe unique issue. Gail Wyler. Gail Wyler. We're a business owner, but I'm really talking about something residential as well. My children lived in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So by the way, thank you for a thorough and I know very tough job. They lived in Cambridge, Massachusetts for 11 years, and I think their parking issues closely mirror our issues. And they had what almost could be our mission statement on their website when I looked up Cambridge, Massachusetts. And it said, "The purpose of the city's resident parking regulation is to maximize the availability of parking for Cambridge residents while discouraging long-term parking on residential streets near commercially zoned areas or transportation access points." Because they had the T, they had a lot of commercial, as well as a lot of multifamily housing, which is where they lived. Anyway, my real concern is that when they went to get their $25 parking pass, they were also given a paper guest pass that could be put in the window. And I think because our street is slated to become a two-hour changeover, it means that when elderly parents are friends, when your kids come with their babies, every two hours they're going to have to go out and move their car. And I think without some kind of a guest pass provided, you know, and I mean, we don't have to recreate the wheel. That is what they did, so I'm hoping you'll consider that. Thank you.
Peter.
I'm Peter Bremstein, 17 North Cottonet. So I share the concerns as the Buckout folks as far as, you know, the changes driving, additional long-term train station parking onto our street. But I guess I had a question. And I'm thinking of, you know, maybe I should open up a taxi business to drive folks to the station or sell parking spots in my driveway. But I remember when you guys were talking about the requested variance for additional parking at the Cosmopolitan building, and then John Canning or his firm did a study, and it, you know, turned out that the study showed different information from like the anecdotal information that the application was made on. So I'm wondering like, this process, I'm going to ask this question, is this process started by... Was there... Is there a traffic study that indicates, you know, kind of quantifiable that the current system, one, you know, needs changing, and two is, you know, can that study, if there is one, you know, can it be kind of modeled, you know, what the anticipated impact, you know, if the changes would be? And then I guess one additional question, which for the North Buckout folks, because I agree it's a dangerous, dangerous street, is, has the village ever thought about running the traffic the other way? One way, they're coming the other way, so that folks who are going to Bridge Street or going to park for the train station would go down to Astor because they wouldn't, you know, wouldn't make sense to go the Buckout way. So that's...
That's South Buckout, we don't want that.
Well, I know, I understand what he's saying because that whole thing never used to happen until Bridge Street was developed. And I raised my kids on that street, and they weren't... They were playing on the sidewalks. I was never worried. Now it's totally different, you know, different thing going on.
So you'd be one way away from parking.
Yeah. Or if you couldn't go over the bridge from Buckout, you can only go over the bridge from Astor. Do you know what I mean? I don't know.
It's not bad, Ann.
That would make all the cars have to go down, then...
That would take care of the ways problem of, you know, or Google Maps telling everyone they can go that way.
Right.
That's a good idea. And also hopefully people would find parking before they came out of Buckout.
But it means that everyone would have to turn left onto Main Street, whereas now, you know, so that you get this whole like, you know, you know that Main Street turns into a parking lot at certain times, and you can't break in.
Every other street does it.
Every other street does it.
We can look into it now. Something we haven't considered, so.
The same thing with Buck... South Buckout maybe.
Thank you. Let me ask my other questions before we...
Come back after the mic.
Oh, I gotta be up there for you to answer?
No, throw it out.
This is more of a sitting type thing.
I know we did a lot of studies in the beginning. I don't know... I don't think we ever did a... I don't think we've ever taken this law and saying, "What would happen now?" You know, I know we did a lot of, you know, hilarious county guards.
There was no form of parking or traffic study, right? So I guess, I guess that's a question, then. Why wouldn't we, before changing a bunch of stuff, find out?
That is good. I mean, I think, again, when we went back to, a couple of residents said, "Hey, why do we have overnight parking? Why do we have no overnight parking on my street? I got a ticket. Why do you have it? Can you explain it to me?" And it was like you coming up right now asking a question. And we said, "Well, because, no, we don't have a reason." And we went back. It took us a month to come up with a bad answer, which was, "It's worth it." Well, that was the answer we had that night. When we looked at it further, they thought it was a law enforcement thing. When there weren't a lot of cars, if they saw a car parked, it was probably up to no good, which is obviously now like so ridiculous that, you know, when we have, you know, license plate readers that are a lot more effective than the old, you know, eagle-eyed cop on the beat.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is like, if you're changing something to make something better, and you're thinking about, well, we could also change it back to something else if it doesn't work. How do you know if it even works if you don't know what the current state is?
Well, we knew that no one could park in front of their house, that street.
Not me for these changing, you know, changing the hours, changing the limits and...
That's fair, you know. But again, it's like, you know, I think it's one of those things where if the feedback tonight was, you know, "We think this is a great idea. Let's go for it," then I don't think we have to spend $15,000 on this study.
Oh, that's a good answer.
So if people said, "You know what? Maybe you have, you know, two more streets are going to be six-hour, and we think it might work," you know, because there's that balance of, you know, yes, we could have a study, and it will cost tens of thousands of dollars. Like, you know, to look at zoning on North Broadway, it's going to be $30,000. So it's like, everything starts at $25,000, it works its way up. You know, so to us, you know, if we can find something that, you know, again, when someone said, "Hey, you know, why do we have overnight parking?" We said, "Or why do we have a ban on overnight parking?" We said, "There's no justification for it." And then we had people say, "Why don't we have parking on my street?" And, you know, so we thought that was going to be such an easy fix five, six years ago. You know, so I think that that's, again, the genesis of that was, then let's try to figure some other things out. So it's... I think that's why we're listening as well. So the answer might be, we might be studying that.
So I had a quick question. I'm sorry, just to clarify. Which... You were talking about changing North Buckout to be one-way southbound. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a completely new one. Not... That's not really the time zone, the time change, the parking time. That's a very interesting...
Yeah, more addresses, I think, what I, you know, what I've talked about...
We've talked about it for years, and I forgot to say it when I went up. Peter came up.
Yeah, South Buckout being one-way also.
If you don't understand, speaking from back here, what we have thought it would do would slow down the traffic from racing down North Buckout, and also that if your destination is Bridge Street area, you should be going down to Astor and then going left over the bridge. And so we, you know, this is just something we've all sort of kicked around, sort of like, as neighbors, like, gee, maybe why wouldn't they just reverse the queue going the other way? And it may well discourage some of the bad driving that we see on a regular basis.
What about people? I mean, my only gotcha is, I could see, like, calm traffic, you know, trying to get into the shortcut into Bridge Street. But what about in the evening? I mean, you're leaving Bridge Street, so would quite a few folks just decide to zoom across and around by the post office?
No, because they pick up at the bottom of Main Street. They don't...
Oh, I see. You mean, well, I think it's harder to take a left down Main Street at Buckout than it is at the three-way stop.
It is harder, but I'm just asking, you know...
Yeah, there's also the suggestion of the left turn only, so you can't go to Bridge Street, which is another interesting. So in other words, you come around at the end.
Yeah, but how do you... You'd have to block.
You can put up those little things that you can drive through, you know, straight cars.
You'd have to put a ticket...
We might get a dollar ticket for two weeks, and that's solid right there.
I don't know about that.
We'll look at it.
Yeah, but we'll definitely look into both of those suggestions.
I think if you look at the people that are driving very fast, it's not Irvington residents.
They can't be Irvington.
People that are racing to get to work in the morning, like, they're coming from New Jersey, Connecticut, and you can just tell they're like young adults that are trying to get...
I did get this... One day I was waiting for the train, and I got to see the traffic officer write ticket after ticket on the stop sign, and I was so happy.
Yeah. He's stopping on that sign though, because he's done that so many times.
I did get complaints from Irvington residents who said, "I got a ticket for a stop sign that's actually the bottom of Main Street." And I said, "Okay, what happened?" They said, "I mean, I went through it, but I live here." And I still got a ticket. And I just said, "Thank you very much."
So I just, I know that you had mentioned earlier about kind of changing the cutoff in terms of the two-hour, like, raising of the block. And with all due respect, I'm just concerned because I feel like that's somewhat misguided to sort of figure like where you're going to do that cutoff. It almost feels divisive in a way that certain blocks would be relegated to the six-hour even lot, in effect, and other blocks wouldn't. So I feel like if, you know, in some ways, having the six-hour lots top to bottom, six-hour time lot limit on the entire downtown, it sort of becomes, it's more, there's more equanimity in that way. It's more, we're all sort of, you know, shouldering that burden.
I'd like to hear what business owners would think about that. I mean, I think part of the idea of changing it to two hours was to have turnover so the business...
I agree.
Except you don't have two-hour at the bottom, so of course, we're impacted by that as well because we have a business across from the El Cerrizo building. We do have some parking, but, you know, there's sort of a changeover between tenants and patients, so same issue.
I don't necessarily disagree with the two-hour. I think that that would be great, but I also am realistic that having some two-hour in the low zone six-hour is not, is not okay.
Anyone else?
Someone didn't go, "Yeah."
Hi, I'm Jeff Helman. I'm North Dutcher Street. A couple of thoughts. First of all, in addition to our resident permit, we currently have an aqueduct permit that we essentially use maybe three weeks a year. And it's when an out-of-town visitor's staying with us, we just park their car up there, use that tag. If there were some kind of, I don't know if it's a dedicated guest permit or if it's just something you could ask the police department for, for a one-week guest pass, something like that, we would happily give up our aqueduct space, in which case it's now available for, you know, business owners, whatever. Excuse me. Second of all, a lot of the talk, and I don't mean to discourage anybody's observations, but a lot of this is very anecdotal, and so we're going on our perceptions, what we see every day. I work from home. I can tell you that coming home in the middle of the day, I'm, if I have to run an errand, I'm almost guaranteed not to find a spot. I get that. People come out to lunch, that's fine. I will say, though, that if the parking enforcement officer ever visited our street, it would probably be the first time.
I agree with that.
And I'm curious, if you change all these streets to two hours, unless you enforce it, it's meaningless. And I question whether the police department has the resources to actually meaningfully enforce this.
I will tell you, my plan for that is technology, which the license plate reader, you can just drive by, and then it automatically logs the time for each car, and then you drive back again, and it'll tell you this one's two hours and 30 minutes. And it's much easier than, there's no chalk, there's no walking down, chalking the tires, and coming back. And that's one of the problems with the six-hour spots, they're so hard to do because if you do the math, if they don't do it, say, eight in the morning, it's almost, you can't get there. So, you know, if they can only really do one part of the street or one street for six-hour spots, which is another thing that makes it very hard to enforce. So I think that, you know, we already talked about pricing out the automated system. And that's what, you know, a lot of the cities do. And it's like White Plains, it seems like they're geniuses, but really, they say, really good technology. So the second that your meter goes or whatever, they get pop up, that car's now legal parks as a safe kind of thing that we can do. Because I think that that's the second phase of this, is once we figure out what the heck we're going to do, we got to enforce it. Like, right now, the signage isn't right in some places. It's actually wrong versus the code. There's like all these things that, so while we are enforcing the obvious ones on Main Street mostly, we have not been pushing the parking enforcement officer to do that because this is all kind of in flux. So I think that that's, that is my answer to your question, because I think you're right. One parking enforcement officer, even a second person, like another police officer, it's very hard. Because we even found, like, people were complaining about the parking, say, in Orange Lee on Hudson. So then we said, "Okay, we got to go mark those tires." Again, they were eight-hour spots. So if they did that, then they weren't marking them here. By the time they got back here, it was, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning, and then it was, they had to be here at 5:59 to get the six-hour, you know, so it was like, logistically, it didn't work. But I think if you could just drive down Main Street and record every car, drive up Main Street, record every car, come back six hours and one minute later, and then, you know, they probably won't be able to get to all the cars. But, you know, I think that that makes it a lot more feasible.
Okay. You're going to add side streets to that.
And we add side streets.
The side streets is the real concern because I know we have full-day train commuters parking on Dutcher Street on a daily basis. The final thing was, so the proposed law says the village clerk or designate shall issue a parking permit. But then when you go to the number of permits, issuance is completely at the discretion of the clerk. And so North Dutcher Street, about a third of the actual households have off-street parking. So most of us fall into this category of, "We have no other option." But under the law, we aren't guaranteed a permit. And that gives me some pause. That's all.
Hold on, I'll say nothing unless guaranteed.
I also want to thank you for grappling with this most difficult topic. It's kind of like a balloon full of air. You squeeze on one side, and it bulges on the other. I'm sure you're familiar with this. I'm speaking from the point of view of someone who owns a Civil War-era house with no driveway, three-family house. And this is not... My name is Christina Lomalino. And so parking has been a scourge in this downtown area, which of course overlaps with the historic district. So it's not uncommon for a small multifamily to exist without a driveway. I believe, just in terms of perspective, that all over Westchester, regular commuters purchase passes to park in commuter lots. So that group, if it is possible, should not be in competition with people who need to park their car somewhere within a reasonable distance of their home and who face this every day. There are also commercial vehicles, which I've spoken about before, which should not be allowed to overnight park on the streets in the downtown. And because it's part of the cost of doing business, if you have a commercial vehicle that you figure out where to park, and that, those vehicles should also not be in competition with the local homeowners. On the subject of overnight parking, one of the benefits of having that period of time between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, where you couldn't park for more than an hour, is that commuters would not use those spots if they planned on coming home very late, or if they planned on going off on the train somewhere and not coming back till the following day. I believe that the restriction on overnight parking should be kept to keep commuters off of the local streets down there from parking overnight, and it could be overwritten by the resident permit. So a resident would be able to park overnight near their home, but commuters or people from out of town, whatever, would not be able to do overnight parking. I don't think we want to encourage overnight parking for, in that restricted parking zone, for anyone other than the residents of those streets. And I'm just curious what the rationale is for lifting the restriction on overnight And I'm just curious what the rationale is for lifting the restriction on overnight parking. Like, who would be using that?
The residents themselves.
But that could be done by the residence permit.
When we first looked at it, that wasn't covered by the permit, so we'd need another act of legislation from this New York State Senate and House, so it was more difficult than just saying, "You know what, make an overnight permit," which would have been easy. We probably would not even be talking about any of this right now.
Because residents might have, there might be two cars and only one has a permit. And so how's the other car gonna park overnight?
Yes, see, we have, I mean, we had like...
We have to look at it.
Yeah, we have to look at it, is the short answer, but...
We have to review the whole New York State legislation. I don't necessarily think that it was originally designed to address an overnight situation, but we'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
It's not...
That's why a lot of...
It seems as though it was designed to restrict overnight parking, because everybody would have to go out and move their car between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
Yeah, but that was, those were different sets of laws, not covered by, what was covered by the New York State Legislature. So it's, whether the two can meet, I'm not sure.
Is there a conceptual agreement that overnight parking should be for residents in the restricted parking zone, or am I misunderstanding?
We assume that the vast majority of people who are going to benefit from it are the residents themselves, not people... So I mean, if you think about it, let's just say hypothetically it was two-hour parking, that commuter that went and stayed overnight and had a great time in the city, we'd get a ticket at 10:00 AM in theory. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't really protect them. Yes, they're fine overnight, but in the morning, they have the same issue.
The town thins out after 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock, it does.
Other than right around the restaurant areas, probably.
It thins out.
Even the restaurants are done by 8:00.
We're all at the sidewalks.
Philadelphia.
And I would just like to point out that not only is it a matter of, kind of a vital matter of convenience that people in that restricted parking zone be able to park near their home somewhere, but property values are very much affected by this. If people, if someone puts their house on the market and they, everybody knows that the parking situation's impossible, that really restricts the number of people who might be interested in purchasing that home, and the value of it declines. So there's a, you know, a financial side to all of this, which I'm sure you're aware of.
Which is, again, that's how we started, people saying that, "I can't park in front of my own house, because there's no parking." But yet, they can two streets away, that's really not fair, I gotta take it. And that was, yeah, the genesis of this whole thing. Or I have to pay for an aqueduct parking permit, like the gentleman at the back, because I, at night, I have to move my car, so I can't park on my street. They can park one street over. And then that's when we couldn't explain why you could park on this street, not this street, because it wasn't, you know, emergency vehicle access, because then you couldn't park there anytime, you couldn't get a fire truck in overnight, you can't get it in during the day. You know, so they were, yeah, it was like, we're chasing our tail for some reason or another.
What is the situation with the commuter lots? Are they, are there spaces available?
No, I've been on a waiting list since January.
Okay.
So I think I was 158 on the waiting list in January.
And that includes the lots on the far side of the tracks, on the west side of the tracks, or is that something different altogether?
You mean Bridge Street? That's completely private property.
It's altogether, there's no commuter parking there.
You can have library parking.
Actually, that was my next question, and I've also brought this up in the past, which is, there are many spots that are allocated for the library, and especially that I'm speaking about the diagonal spaces in front of the library on Astro Street. And I'm wondering if there's any thought that after hours, that could be overnight parking for the local residents. Thank you.
That's just a science change.
I have a follow-up question, or will you take away my hard pass?
No, not when you bring a nice thing like that.
So I just wanted to say that that's one of the reasons why I did this little thing that I did of actually, instead of being anecdotal, counting up the houses, the driveways, the cars, the people, is to show you that there is, in fact, even on our street, which has basically no one, has off-street parking, almost no one, just like the other guy from the other side of Dutcher. Even so, there's enough spaces on the street to accommodate everyone, plus a few extra here and there, so there shouldn't be any problem with overnight parking of if, you know, somebody's grandmother or something is parked there, that's not the issue, except the nights when it's alternate side. So when it's alternate side, most people park on the good side when they get home, and then it's like musical chairs, because if you're too late, boom, you're on the other side. And then you have to either drag ass out in the snow and move the car, or go somewhere else. But anyway, so I think the overnight, it shouldn't be an issue. I think it was more that one weird Grinnell Street wasn't allowed to park, but everyone else was doing it anyway. But the other thing I wanted to say about overnight was, one thing that I noticed when I was trying to understand it is, that it seemed like, it seemed like there was ambiguity about whether you could park overnight in the municipal lots. So at the end of one of them, the very last thing I think about municipal lots, it might have been, or limited time, it said, "You could only park overnight in the municipal lots if you had a tag." So one thing I think you might think about is, it could let people with resident tags park in the municipal lots overnight, and with the benefit of their resident tag, so that if you do happen to come home and there's no place to park, you at least have somewhere where you can leave your car without knowing you're going to get a ticket, so that you could go up to the aqueduct lot, let's say, if you couldn't find a place on your own street. And I think you need to clarify as well that who parks in the municipal parking lots overnight? Who's allowed to, who's not allowed to? It could be that it's free for anyone. So another way to go would be, as long, as soon as it's after 7:00 or whenever the time limit is, anyone from anywhere can park in a municipal lot without a permit, if there's a space. So, I mean, that's another way to go.
Okay. I secretly hope that you charged, Jake, your least favorite client when you did this. Anyone else? I think this was a very interesting opening night discussion. You know, unfortunately, I think we were, it's all clear as mud, this is what we entered this evening, I think we had some really interesting ideas, mostly just about North Buckout, but, you know, I think it was an important discussion. I'm sorry Connie couldn't be here, because this has been her passion since 2009. I remember Connie and I got on the board in 2009, and the big issue then was empty storefronts. And I said, "You know what, Mayor Siegel at the time, I said, 'I can't wait to the day we're complaining that we have no place to park in Irvington.'" "Careful what you wish for, because here we are." You know, so I remember then, there was no waiting list for the, for the train, either train station, and there seemed to be plenty of parking everywhere. So, you know, I guess, things are good and we gotta try to figure out, you know, a rich person's problem, that, that things are too, too successful and too many people want to come here, Rockland County or otherwise. But we're gonna keep working on this until we come up with some solutions, anyway. I think, to me, the biggest, the top priority is, is safety on, on North Buckout, which is kind of a completely separate issue than, than parking. So we're gonna, we're gonna try to focus on that, some of the course, and I think that some of the suggestions about maybe a lot turn on the word, reversing it the other way, are really interesting. Reversing every other day, maybe give you a cigar. This day is what it is altogether.
Some people are doing that now, every once in a while.
They're looking at their GPS only.
Going backwards, the other way.
So thank you all for coming to the parking. And have a great Thanksgiving, because all of your saying my big green, yeah. Did you get that, Barry? We decided we're just gonna use on the waterfront.
She gets a car once a month and she pays like...
How about a little bit of rock?
She's allowed to have it.
There you go. We should write a opinion piece. Put your name too.
The actual lot itself, so, well, only half a little bit, we'll talk to the other half of the residents. Yeah. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff.
Happy Thanksgiving.
See you!
Your next is the...
A lot of people, right? How do you know my money's there?
I make a motion to approve the legislation as...
Stealth approval.
I didn't get a second. It was a public hearing, I don't know. So I guess we'll just leave the public hearing open for the next five years. Next is approval of contract 2018-27 with BNC Branch Consulting for Construction Management Services.
So this is the, I guess, the final piece of the puzzle, to accomplish certain relatively smaller village projects that are subject to bidding, but that are really too small to do sealed bids on. You already approved multiple contracts with various tradespeople at a previous meeting for various forms of trade labor, like electrician, plumber, general contracting, that's, general carpentry, et cetera. Ben Branch is a person who we are recommending a contract with to be the general contractor, to essentially run the jobs for us. He's more than capable, and we've had certainly previous history with him in various areas, including the library and, and here at Town Hall. And, you know, we met with him and feel that he'll be able to be the person to get some of these jobs done.
What was the estimated budget on this?
It's, it's a, it's a project-by-project basis. So for example, building a auxiliary shower and locker room in the...
PD.
Yeah, in the police, spilling over into where the boiler room area, that's one project that already has a budget and money set aside, you know, say $50,000, for example. There's window work that needs to be done at the library, that's been estimated at between $40,000 and $50,000. And then there's other projects down the line. So it's, again, project by project. I don't, I don't believe we...
I didn't see like a...
We didn't put a cap in the contract, so it's, it's capped by the project budgets themselves.
So by construction manager, you mean a GC?
Yes. He's essentially general contracting for us. He'll be, he'll be calling in, he's working for us, I mean, obviously, with this, with this contract, but he's, he'll be calling in the various trades and making sure that the materials that are needed to build these jobs are here and people are working when they say they're supposed to work, and doing what they're supposed to do.
Do you think that getting a bill every 30 days is sufficient to...
Yeah, that's pretty standard.
I guess you'll be talking to him all the time when he's doing it. He's not gonna be working by himself somewhere on this.
No.
It's gonna be consultation with you or Greg or...
Yeah, this is, this is all, I don't know how else to put it, other than, we're not, he doesn't have a blank checkbook, he's working very closely with us at our direction to get jobs done. And so he's responsible for running the jobs, he knows he's gonna have a $50,000 budget, and he's gotta have them built for the particular budget set aside.
Any questions?
We used it successfully, by the way, if, if, I mean, this is a much, much smaller version of it, but we used it very successfully when we renovated the interior of Town Hall, which I don't think any of you are on the board for, but the offices, when the library finally did move out...
The old place.
When the library did move out, the offices upstairs and, and this room and the police department were renovated. And because of the unknown conditions and the many unknown conditions, it really made no sense to have an architect come through and try to probe and draw up plans that someone could bid on. So we really said, "Let's just have someone direct how the labor is used, and if there's an unknown condition, he'll just redirect the labor." There's no change orders, there's no, it's just a, it's a pretty efficient way to do it if you have the right person. We believe Ben can do that. Ben wasn't the one involved back, you know, it was a much bigger job, but he's certainly capable of this scale.
Very good. Resolved, authorize the village administrator to execute a consulting agreement with BNC Branch Consulting for Construction Management Services. I'll make a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorizing tax or share with RZ Country Club? It's just a straight bar. Was this unexpected, or...
No, this was expected. I think a lot of it does arise over the fire they had several years ago. And we had the same assessment, even though they were closed, the business, the tail of the business, so after evaluating that...
I'm guessing it'll go way up now that they have any...
Just gonna check the 19-year-old.
Yeah, a $19 million renovation there.
$10,000 at least.
I wish it would work that way.
Make sure it went back up, brother.
That's what I'm checking, so I have this...
I'm actually gonna abstain from this, because I'm a member, I think it's, I feel like I'm indirectly voting myself, so I'm abstaining.
That's appropriate, yeah.
So I can read it still?
Yes.
Did you want to say something like...
No, no, basically, the one thing I will say is, and we'll provide you with a more detailed summary, but we are, this does push us over our, our budget and refunds for the current fiscal year that we're in. I don't remember the exact number.
It's $213,000. We've watched it $175,000.
Right.
Or up to $213,000.
This is, and this is for the May 2019.
Through the end of this fiscal year, that's right. So, you know, we have, we have had a number, we've had a number of other years where we've been well under, so, you know, it's really a timing difference. It still doesn't feel great, but, but the, we have had some back and forth with our council representing us, and although some things are in our control and some things aren't, we, he knows that we're essentially out of budget, and his, his forecast is, he doesn't see any pressing matters. So hopefully that translates into no pressing matters get settled prior to May 31st. If they do, we'll deal with it, we have a fund balance, certainly. But there's certainly nothing tremendously large that would, would cause us a problem, not, not on the scale of, you know, other entities like the school district, for example.
Right.
So anyway, it looks, the outlook looks quiet for now.
Great. So I'll read this and then abstain. Whereas petitions have been filed by the RZ Country Club, challenging real property tax assessments on the village's assessment roll, in respect of the subject property for the 2013-17 taxpayers, property unit, RZ Country Club, whereas petitioners' actions are now pending at Supreme Court, Westchester County, and whereas the town petitioner reached a mutually agreeable resolution, now therefore, now therefore, the office of village committees authorized to effectuate a settlement commensurate with the following terms, for 2013, reduction of $41,210, 2014, $48,520, 2015, $76,700, 2016, $1,660,860, 2017, $1,660,860. Those buried and shares refund is $75,49.52. I guess I...
No more.
Because someone has to make a motion. You can say some...
Yeah, I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And want to stand?
Yeah.
Approval contract 2018-28 with AKRF for planning services regarding zoning along North Broadway. Speaking of zoning along North Broadway, for $30,000.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So, again, this is based on our standard consulting agreement, as, and as you have referenced in past meetings, this is an effort to establish new zoning along the North Broadway corridor. You've chosen the firm of AKRF to, to go forward with the study. The, the cost of the study is a fixed fee of $30,000. There's a slight modification to this resolution that needs to be made, which is that this, this money needs to be appropriated from surplus. This is not a budgeted expense, if you decide to go forward. And we do have some money left from the comprehensive plan study, which could be used for this, but it's only on the order of about $5,000, as I recall. So you do need an additional roughly $25,000 to appropriate from surplus.
Just, just one thing, I know that there was one open question about whether the price she gave would include variations on the blocks to, for different uses, and I called her the next day and confirmed, and it does. What she meant about retaining a landscape, it was if you wanted things drawn out more...
Right, yeah, more of a rendering.
But, but she would offer various, various studies of proposed uses, so various blocks.
Result, authorized village administrator to execute a consulting agreement with AKRF for the purpose of furnishing certain consulting services for preparing...
Right, yeah, more of a rendering.
But, but she would offer various, various studies of proposed uses, so various blocks.
Right. Result authorized village administrator executing consulting agreement with AKRF for the purpose of furnishing certain consulting services for preparing zoning tax and map amendments for the North Broadway corridor, subject to the final review of the village's attorney. Result approved the following budget transfer from surplus.
To professional services.
In the amount of $30,000.
$30,000, yeah. Whatever's left, well, whatever's left, we'll move back to the general funds.
Perfect. I'll make the motion, you have a second? All in favor? Aye.
So I had a quick question, while you're bringing up before we went into words, big pieces of words. I was looking at, and something's been bothering me, and I was looking at the Town Hall Plaza, you know, the fact that our main street slips down, almost the entire length from Broadway down. All the benches we've been putting out for public benefit, I guess you'd say, they're all out of need, you know, and some of them are at 70, 20-degree angles. And it occurred to me that it would be a simple matter to just sort of create wedges that could lift the one side up, to at least level the bench out.
It was funny, when I first saw it, the only thing I thought about was, you're gonna have like your legs dangling from one side, I guess you wouldn't have to make it flat either.
Well, you would, but why not make it flat? But I mean, you know, I just think that you're, you're talking about a difference of maybe about, generally about five to six inches. So it's not gonna be that significant, it's not gonna be like, you know, you're jacked up on a stool, but I was wondering what kind of approach we'd have to sort of, I don't even know, I mean, it's not something you can buy, but it's something that could definitely be, you know, built like poor concrete form, and you'd have like, you know, $20 in parts and you'd have it, you know what I'm saying? So it seems like something I'd like to investigate, have us investigate, to make the usefulness of the benches.
I don't think it was, it looked that severe until I saw it from the building here. Like, you know, the ones by the rack are angled, but they're not.
Well, there's some like down by, I'm gonna say it's the old this and that, you know, the, the realtor now, where this, if I remember correctly, it used to be, they first put a bench out in front, but it was literally at like a 30-degree angle, and so they moved it around to the side street, which maybe is a solution, but it's just that, there's a lot of places where benches have gone in where there's some significant.
You can ask Ben Branch for people usually.
Well, that's, that's what I started to think.
Our, our DPW, okay. Our DPW can handle fixing that, it's, it's just a question of whether you wanna fix.
Yeah, I think, but it seems like something.
We didn't see it as an issue, but it fits an issue.
Yeah, I saw it, and I said, I don't know if you, I don't know what, I don't know what's kind of usual.
Has anybody complained or expressed a concern?
Mark Gill.
Besides.
Come on.
It's definitely an interesting.
Interesting question, are people using the benches?
Yeah, they are.
I've had.
Only on one side.
But only on one side.
I've had several residents actually approach me, in fact, on, on this, at the last Hardest Market, I had several people, it was like one of those days where everyone seemed to be talking about the benches for some reason. So it does happen, it's not like, we don't get people sending letters in.
But.
We probably won't do this before the winter, so maybe.
We can look at it.
You can use some time to observe it a little bit in, in action, and then tell us what you want, it'll be a nice spring slash summer project, you know.
Well, I mean, I don't.
Okay.
I mean, there's probably, there's probably a professional standard for it, right? Like, it's no more than a 30-degree angle, who knows? I bet there is one.
I don't know. You can research it if you'd like, I'm happy to ask the question.
It's on hills.
You can Google it, and then, that's Ben Branch.
Best, best practice.
Best practices in cooking benches.
I'm sure there's an ADA.
It just sounds slow.
It is.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
I'll.
I mean, because at some point, you can't even, you really can't sit there and have lunch, because your lunch rolls down the street.
Especially when you have soup, you spill it over your pants.
Have you done that already?
No. I haven't had a chance to sit in those yet.
I'll make a multi-part quiz when I do my research.
Trustee liaison reports?
We've covered just about everything, we sent the traffic committee's meeting to, you know, look, to give some final comments on the Route 9 plan. The other thing I just wanted to say, although it's not my committee, I just wanted to give a shout out to the beautification committee, because I know they recently did their, did some fall planting, and saw fresh hot peppers and, and cabbage plants and stuff in the planters, and I thought it looked kinda nice, I don't know how they look now that the freeze is, we're gonna get such a heavy freeze, but I just wanted to thank them for the work they've done to make the street look, the streets look nice.
And can I ask you to talk to the traffic committee about these, the North Buckout plans, either the reversing, or the left turn only, which I think is really.
Interesting, yeah.
It's really, I don't know why, never crossed my mind.
You know, the other thing that's been discussed quite a bit is south, make South Buckout one-way.
Yeah.
And preferably southbound, I think is the idea.
Sometimes it feels like it's one-way, when all the cars are parked there, right?
Yeah, but that way you don't have the, the problem turning, the, the accident ready to happen, taking a turn up Main Street.
Yeah.
I think, I think there was some concern expressed previously about implementing the South Buckout Street Plan before we have the sidewalk, people walking on the road situation on South Astor Street resolved.
Right, that's why we will hold it.
Correct. Because you'd be directing considerably more traffic down or up South Astor Street.
All right. Thank you.
Just catering on with, with some more of our holiday comment, and yesterday was the PTO and Turkey Trot. You're again a great testament to the combination of both our departments and our residents working together. Close to 200 people participated, thanks to the police department, the ambulance corps, the Girl Scouts, and a lot of volunteers who helped. The holiday happening is scheduled for Saturday, December 1st, as Brian said, lots going on there. And then we have Thanksgiving, we have our Thanksgiving deliveries going on. Special thanks to the Gilberti family, owners of Sam's Italian Restaurant, who are the lead sponsors for this delivery, as well as the Durigo family, who are helping to supply for the senior citizens luncheon, which is scheduled for Tuesday, November 20th. And of utmost importance, the bathrooms in Seane Hudson, Matheson, and Mora Parks have been winterized and are closed for the season.
So please don't use them.
Before I turn it over to Dennis, I have a quick highway department activity. On 11/15, we had seven inches of sleep, uh, 11 inches of snow, sleet, and rain. As everyone knows, it was stuck in that monstrosity, and I am, I do want to send it out to the Valves tomorrow. Another interesting thing is they planted six trees and newly installed tree wells on Main Street, just in time for the, you know, for it to be January weather, which is nice. They assisted the wreck of the Turkey Trot, and repaired and rebuilt the catch basin on South Continent Street, and repaired and replaced drainage problems on Station Road by Brook Place. Those are the highlights.
And I have nothing to next.
Perfect. Village Administrator's report.
Uh, no, that's it for tonight.
Yeah, both clear treasure?
Nothing further. We had a barring last week, I said to have memo, the various visits we received, we were quite pleased.
Still pretty low. And the village attorney's report. Public comments. Review of action items. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
I think, yeah, okay, that's it.
All right.
I have a note about the benches, but.
Research the benches.
Research the way.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, we're obviously all gonna follow up on the, on the, a lot of the suggestions on public hearing, but that's.
There were some very good suggestions tonight.
Lots more to think about, yeah.
And I also appreciate the public wasn't given a hyperbole tonight, and it was, that was very good.
No, it was actually less than painful, I thought.
It was a very good session.
Constructive discussion.
Constructive, positive, very civil.
A good example of democracy. I will make a motion to adjourn if I can have a second. All in favor? Aye.